Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the West Fargo Commission Meeting for Monday, July 15th. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Thank you. First order of business is to approve the Order of the Agenda. Gentlemen, what is your pleasure? I move we approve. Is there a second, please? Second. Moved by Commissioner Olson, second by Commissioner Jertovic that the approval of the Order of the Agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes of July 1st, 2019. They have been distributed. They're on pages two through three. Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, second. Been moved in second to approve the minutes of the July 1st, 2019 minutes as distributed. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is Item D, Building Permits. The building permits report has been distributed. And for your review.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jertovic. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, second. Been moved in second to approve the building permits as distributed. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is the Consent Agenda. At this time, I would call on Legal Counsel John Shockley. We have one item that we'd like to discuss regarding Item B.
Yes, thank you, Commission President Dardis. The item that we'd want to discuss, just briefly, clarification regarding Item B on the Consent Agenda, the Lights on 32 Plaza Agreement. As we discussed prior to the meeting, there is a request to clarify Section 4.02 of the agreement to clarify that the City Commission and the developer would mutually agree to a budgeted amount for the construction of the plaza. Just adding that clarification, what I would propose is if the Commission is okay with that clarification, that we just add it to the agreement, and next meeting, I'll just provide an update to the Commission showing the change in the agreement.
The item in question is that the agreement, and of course, Mrs. Fisk is representing the city and the developer, and there's no mention of the City Commission, and there's no mention of a final budget number. And that's why I raised that to Mr. Shockley as to whether we should not have a budget number before we're entering into any type of agreement. So, my fellow Commissioners, could I ask for a consensus or a motion? Either are? Are we all okay with that, that the city, in addition to the city administrator, has the right to review and preview the budget when it comes to Cheyenne 32 for what the city's investment would be? Everybody? Not in head? We have a consensus on that. Thank you, Mr. Shockley. Again, going back to the Agenda, is the Consent Agenda, Items A through E with the addition of the amendment for Lights on 32 Plaza Agreement and Item B.
I move we approve the Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Jertovic, second. Been moved in second to approve the Consent Agenda as presented and with the amendment on Item B, Lights on 32 Plaza Agreement. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda, Awake LLC Appeal. Mr. Shockley.
Thank you, Mr. Commission President. It is staff's understanding that the applicant has rescinded her or withdrawn her appeal of the Liquor Control Board's denial of the renewal of her license. We did not receive that in writing, but instead were told that statement verbally. So, recognizing that there are certain due process rates for appellantants, I felt it was appropriate to keep it on the Agenda, and I think it would be appropriate for the Commission President just to ask if anybody's here for that appeal. If nobody's here for the appeal, we can assume then it's been withdrawn because we haven't received anything in writing, just so that there's a record of it in a public hearing showing that nobody appeared for the appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. With that being said, is there anyone here from the Awake Appeal with regard to the rescinding of their liquor license? I would caution that anybody that speaks to this must be on the liquor license as one of the owners. Is there anyone that would like to speak on regard to the Awake Liquor License repeal? All right. The records show that there's no one here this evening to that, so...
I'm sorry, can I ask? John, is there a law that says if they're not here, that automatically the appeal's denied, or is there... I mean, could she bring it back at a later date?
Well, she verbally told us that she was withdrawing her appeal, and the reason I wanted to keep it on the Agenda was just in the event that, because we hadn't received anything formally in writing, that she didn't make it clear.
I realize that, so that's kind of what I'm asking, so if we... whatever we do tonight, she can't come back tomorrow and say, "I want to come back in front to do it again," or we better detable this and get the letter in writing.
There's no need to table it. She didn't appear, and she told us she withdrew it, so we just need the record to note that nobody appeared on behalf of the appeal.
I might note that in that process of her removing herself from an appeal, she has met with Chief Yonkey and Deputy Chief Boyer, and during that discussion, and Chief Yonkey is in the process of working on coordinating a meeting citywide with the Chief of Police and the City Commission's slash and/or Mayor's, and so, like, I think that the best possible resolve of this is coming forward, but there will be a forthcoming meeting, and Chief Yonkey is in charge of trying to schedule that meeting, just for the public record. So, is this an actionable item, John?
No, no action is necessary.
All right. With that being said, the Awake LLC Appeal, that portion of the Agenda is closed. We'll move on to Item Number Two, and that's to review the AE2S Proposed Water and Sewer Rate Study. Mrs. Fisk.
Good evening, Commission President and other Commissioners. At this point, as we are talking budgets and different things of that nature, we have talked about the revenues that come into our enterprise funds, which are water, sewer, sanitation. We did an adjustment, and Chris was able to calculate all the appropriate rates on our sanitation, but at this point, I feel that with us hooking onto Fargo for sewer and having hooked onto Fargo for water, that it's time to be proactive and plan forward, and I feel that it's time to get some true justifiable rates that are based on true costs and true increases that could potentially come forward in the future. And with that in mind, we have met with AE2S, and they are going to come up and present to you not only some information on this rate study, but I believe they're also going to talk a little bit about where they're at with the Core Area Infrastructure Plan, and then lead into this. This is a really important tool for a city to be able to have rates that you can justify and actually talk to the constituents, taxpayers about, and prove them that we actually have looked deeply into it and they are justifiable. So, I will let them speak on it, as they are the experts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisk. Gentlemen, would you please state your names for the record?
Ryan Grubb with AE2S. So, Tina mentioned before Sean gives a presentation on the... sorry about that. Before Sean speaks on the water and rate, or water and wastewater rate study, I was going to give a brief update on the Core Area Infrastructure Master Plan, because I am serving as the project manager on that project. Just for a quick project overview, I wanted to give everybody a refresher as far as the boundary of the study area, the key project components, and some of the benefits that this master plan will provide. So, there were elements of the project that were outside of the study area, but generally, it's bounded by 13th Avenue to the south, Drain 21 to the west, the railroad tracks just north of Main Avenue to the north, and 9th Street to the east. The key project components in this project were data collection and organization, specifically with GIS data with regards to the street water and sewer system. Another major component was sanitary sewer televising review, where we utilize the city's camera, and the goal was to televise all the clay pipe in the core area of town. Another major component was hydraulic modeling, both with water and storm sewer. The water modeling was for the entire city distribution system, so that was one of the main things that was outside of the study area. And then the storm sewer modeling was confined to within the study area. And then using that data collected from the data collection phase, conducting an infrastructure assessment on the streets, the water, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer, as well as the lift stations within the study area, and then compiling all of that information into a capital improvements plan. So, the three key project benefits that this will provide is going to give the city a comprehensive and up-to-date GIS files for this core area of town. It's going to identify deficiencies in the infrastructure and prioritize needs, and with that prioritized needs list, it's going to ensure that capital costs are being invested efficiently and effectively within the core area of town. So, to keep this brief, I just want to provide an update on just one of the systems that we looked at, specifically the sanitary sewer system. So, on the screen right now, on the top left, that contains a pie chart that shows the percentage split for the different pipe materials within the study area, and while the majority is still PVC or over half, almost a quarter of it is the clay pipe, which is mainly the area of concern. Just to throw some quick numbers out, we looked at approximately 213,000 feet of sanitary sewer pipe that was included in our assessment, and 5,000 of which was clay. On the right side of the screen, that just shows a couple of screenshots. That's part of the televising review process. For each segment of pipe that was televised, we will have a detailed assessment sheet that gives information as far as the deficiencies in the pipe, where those deficiencies are located, and then it also calculates an overall risk score for that pipe segment. So, all of the sewer that was televised as part of this project will have a score. There were about 330 segments that were televised, so you'll have ranks from 1 to 330 as far as what's in worse condition. As far as some current and remaining work tasks, and then just schedule moving forward, we're just currently in the process of finalizing the modeling efforts, both with the water system and the storm system modeling. We're refining the capital improvements plan list, which we will then be reviewing with Chris and Public Work Staff and Dustin. We're estimating costs for those improvements, and then compiling all that information into a detailed master plan report. Some key dates, just on the schedule looking forward, next Thursday, we will be having a Brown Bag presentation with city staff, and that will go into a lot more detail on the project components, project scope, and also present city staff an opportunity to ask questions about the project and just provide information to staff that maybe isn't as familiar with the project. We are aiming for end of July to produce a draft capital improvements plan, and then by the end of August, pending city reviews and how the review process goes with the capital improvements plan, wrap up the entire project, including the master plan report. So, just to summarize, this Core Area Master Plan is going to identify several infrastructure needs and costs in the core area of town, and those are going to be organized into a capital improvements plan. So, the next step is going to be aligning a funding strategy, looking out into the future on how to make sure that strategic investments are being made in the core area, and Sean's going to touch more on some of those funding opportunities, and specifically water and sewer rates. Thanks, Ryan. Good evening, Commissioners. As Ryan mentioned, and as you can see on this last slide of his portion of the presentation, key thing that's being looked at in the Core Area Infrastructure Master Plan, or at the conclusion of that, is really how to fund those improvements, and as Ms. Fisk mentioned in her opening remarks, a key thing that we'll be looking at then is really how do we develop strategies around this master plan and beyond for all of the city of West Fargo's water and sewer infrastructure, in order to ensure that rates are sustainable and they're ultimately defendable and equitable and in line with the cost of service that you are providing. There are a number of things, obviously, that are key considerations for West Fargo when you think about setting water and sewer rates and ensuring that they are set appropriately. I mean, obviously, you're a fast-paced, growth community, been one of the fastest-growing communities in our region for quite some time, and that's obviously a key point when you look at setting rates and making sure that they're on the right path. Also, as Ms. Fisk mentioned, there is new service considerations. So, when you look at the bulk service from the city of Fargo that you're currently receiving for water, that you're considering for sewer, that's a different dynamic that you're paying for when it comes to supply, treatment, and then ultimately treatment discharge of your wastewater stream. We have set historically and worked with Fargo on their rate models for both water and sewer. We've played a part in then helping them understand how to work with the city of West Fargo for what the rates will be for you, and what we're talking about here is the next level of setting those rates down to your customers for what you'll be paying for that bulk service from the city of Fargo. So, growth and bulk service and all of the neat things that are going on in West Fargo, but there's a lot of costs as well that's being incurred, and we want to work with you to set rates most appropriately and in line with best practice. We talk about best practice. Obviously, there's a number of key considerations, but we do pride ourselves on working from best practice when we perform a comprehensive water and sewer rate study. There's good guidance out there. The American Water Works Association, the Water Environment Federation, so AWWA is this on the water, the drinking water side, and the Water Environment Federation is on the wastewater side. Both of them put out really good guidance on what is best practice for modern sewer rate setting, and all of our studies are, or plan of studies are ultimately developed in line with those recommendations and documentation that's included in those manuals. So, much of what you'll see here tonight really is a customized approach for West Fargo built upon best practice, and we've got a number of words here around what does best practice mean for rate setting, but equitable structure and appropriate pricing signals to your customers, being proactive and avoiding shock, rate shock, so actually having a plan that looks across a singular year into multiple years, and developing what those needs are going to be over time. All of that is key, and then obviously, the last bullet there is education, working with you as policymakers to educate the appropriateness of rates, and working ultimately to help you message any changes that may come as recommendations from the study to your customer base. I hit on each of these briefly. I won't elaborate too much further, but there's looking at your infrastructure, renewal of that infrastructure, the wholesale supply to them dynamics, then ultimately developing a sustainable plan, and we've just dubbed them here on this slide, the what, the how, the understanding of the planning components to the study, as a little bit of setup information as to what we'll be looking at in detail with our efforts. I hit on this briefly, as far as the AWWA in one manual and the left manual of practice. In general, each prescribes four common steps to developing a rate study, and we generally use these four common steps with expansion and contraction around each step, dependent upon an individual utility's needs. But those steps are revenue requirements, determination, so what are you really trying to fund? The cost of service analysis, how are those costs being driven by your customers, and what revenues are you currently realizing? So, we'll want to take a good look at user classes with you, residential class of service, commercial class of service, any other classes that might be appropriate, industrial, multifamily classes of service, and test your current revenues and revenue requirements that we'll analyze to the revenues you're generating from user classes in order to determine if a rate structure change is required, and that's the third step there, which is the rate design component, looking at cost of service, how costs are driven, and how do we appropriately recruit those costs through what could be a potential revised rate design with the study. And then the last piece is testing those rates long-term. It's dubbed here, revenue adequacy, but really what that becomes is a multi-year financial plan, and we think, I just mentioned, rate shock, developing a multi-year plan to ensure that those rates are constructed with good thought process, not only for the next budget year, which most cities and finance departments are really good working on next year's budget, but this is developing a plan for well beyond one year to make sure that your needs are met long-term. So, the five tasks that are included to the proposal, our proposal and agreement that Ms. Fisk shared with you here before the meeting are the first task, which is the revenue requirements forecasting, looking closely at your budgets today, looking at things such as the capital improvements plan from the Core Area Infrastructure Master Plan, considering also any reserving requirements and recommendations that we would make to make sure that we are looking at financially sustainable utilities funded to an appropriate level. The next step is that cost of service and rate design, as I alluded to on the prior slide. We also want to look at your overall funding approach, well beyond utility rates. Are you funding your infrastructure well beyond just utility rates today? There's things such as assessments and other fees and charges that are charged by the city. All of that comes into play in a rate study like this, where we'll want to look at your funding policy, understand how those other revenues are brought to the table, any potential modifications, if we do see changes to the funding policy that would seem appropriate, and then ultimately, like I said, testing all of that through revenue adequacy scenarios to develop the best plan of attack for our long-term rate recommendations that we'll make within. Very briefly, just hitting on each of those components then, when we talk to revenue requirements, this is really detailed, rolling up our sleeves, looking at line item budgets, looking at CIPs, and forecasting out where we believe costs are going to go. As I mentioned earlier, we'll be looking closely at things like service from the city of West Fargo, looking at master planning, but we'll also want to look at beyond what we can directly identify, generally, how are your systems aging? And when I say, or what I mean by that, is there's some things that are just generally unidentifiable, and we want to look at equity in your rates over time, and so we'll be looking at the, I'll call it like an advanced depreciation analysis. So, beyond what we've identified as line item projects, just generally, what is a good recommendation based on total value invested in your system and how that value's being consumed over time to come up with reserve recommendations? Just real quickly on reserves, there are a number of reserves that we'll consider and that are typically considered within a rate study. You know, what's the appropriate amount of cash that you should have for working capital? Are there any stabilization needs or fluctuations that we should be considering as we look at weather-based influences, if water sales go up or down because of wet or dry seasons, helping you to mitigate and have reserves set aside for those purposes? The renewal and replacement reserves, I just hit on a moment ago, which is really looking at the aging of the system. What are you planning to invest, and what should you possibly be saving for the future? So, that type of work all goes into a comprehensive rate study. On the cost of service, then, as we look at those revenues and look to allocate them to user classes of service, really what we're trying to determine again is how are those costs driven by those user classes of service in order to pass the rate reasonable test, rate reasonableness test, which is generally rates shouldn't be arbitrary, capricious, or discriminatory, and I'm not trying to sound like a lawyer up here, Mr. Shockley, but those words broken down more simply are subjective, unpredictable, or unfair. And so, that's the core reason to perform a cost of service, is to make sure that how you are charging your customers is based on how they drive costs. And one thing I would point to would be, for instance, like peaking factors, the residential class of service typically has a high peaking factor in the summer for lawn watering, and you would consider that in cost allocation within the cost analysis overall. The results you typically get at the end of the cost of service analysis are really as simple as what I'm showing here. This is actually an example for a study we just wrapped up for Estes Park, Colorado. We just did a study for them, and this in general was telling us how costs were being driven versus how they were realized, just as I mentioned. Just if you look at the residential class here, as we analyze the revenue requirements of their water utility, what this was showing is that residential class was about 51% of the cost, and they were about 54% of the revenue. So, in general, there was a slight inequity in that class, whereas we developed a rate structure moving forward. We recommended to those classes that are negative there that you see adjustments that were slightly higher than the residential class, given that the residential class was contributing more revenue than was allocated through the cost analysis. And that leads really into the next step, which is designing rates that are in consideration of cost of service. So, what are you funding? How are those costs driven? And then how do we design the rates appropriately? And we'll develop a number of alternatives. You know, currently, when we look at your rates on a fixed and variable basis, there may be changes that we would recommend to that moving forward, but the overall goal is to make sure that things are easy to understand, that they're effective, that we're not subjecting you to further volatility in revenue generation, and that they're appropriate and in line with the cost of service so that they are defendable. So, last piece quickly here is the revenue adequacy analysis, and this is really testing everything together. So, as we look at costs, as we look at reserving policies, as we look at rate recommendations and the revenues that we're expecting to generate from those rates, bringing it all together into a multi-year financial model in order for us to make final recommendations on total cash reserve targets, and then ultimately rate increases required over time. Generally, what those models end up looking like is here, what is called the output cash balance graphic from a rate model. This is actually for Bozeman, this is for the city of Bozeman's wastewater fund. We just wrapped up a water and sewer rate study for the city of Bozeman, Montana here last winter, and this was the end recommendations made for their wastewater fund on reserve targets and the associated increases required in order to fund to those reserve levels, including funding all of their ONM and capital improvements, everything else that that fast-paced growth community of Bozeman was looking to get done as well. So, what this graphic is just indicating is the percentage increases required to fund all of that ONM, capital, debt service, and also fund reserves to appropriate target levels, which are the stacked bar graphs here that you're seeing. This would be the end model deliverable that we would have, and we would deliver to the city, would be your model for use thereafter. Will include some training with Ms. Fisk and Mr. Larson in the finance department in order for them to use this model thereafter, because like I said, it is a multi-year model that we'll be analyzing, and each year it can be updated with actuals in order to determine if any course correction is required after our work is done. So, it's a working model that the city will have and available for your use after our work is completed. So, with that, I'd open it up to any questions. I know, I believe Ms. Fisk did share both proposal and our agreement for the Commission's consideration, and I'm open to any questions you might have on the study process as we've laid it out working with staff.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions? Mr. Thorstein?
Yeah, just recently, I believe Chris sent out an email after a recent weather event where we had a lot of rain, and our wastewater system got inundated with sewage, probably from some pumps, it could be from other sources or whatever. Our wastewater system is not metered, it's based on the water in and water out, is what we're assuming. So, does your study address that? How are we going to handle that when we get excess of our extraordinary sewage under these circumstances, and how do we pay for it? Because now every, I don't know how much we're paying Fargo, but all the gallons that we're sending to Fargo, they're going to charge us for. So, now, you know, we can't pinpoint who created that. It's probably done in a citywide way, but we're going to have to have funds to pay for that, either taking it out of our general fund or something. But, does your study address those extraordinary events? I guess is my question.
Funny you should bring that up as an example, because we actually work to set the rates for... the rates for the interconnection between East Grand Forks and Grand Forks when East Grand Forks chose to send their sewer. And it's very much a part of what we're looking at right now with the wet weather we're experiencing. It's been a wonderful year so far in that regard. But we do look closely at how your flows will fluctuate seasonally, and the key is, is you will be a metered customer now, right? So what doesn't so much look like an expense today when you discharge to your, your open lagoon system is very much going to come at a cost. So excellent point, we do look at that closely. And in the cost analysis, we look at how do we appropriately charge it back to your customer base? And there are a few different methods that can be used, and we'll look at those methods within the study in order to make sure that we're doing it most appropriately for your circumstances.
Okay. Commissioner, any additional questions for Mr. Kettig?
I would only, I would offer on the other side, we'll look closely as well on water. There's the same circumstance on water where water loss comes into consideration, where you, you lose water in your distribution system and you have to purchase every drop in. And so when you look at that water loss, how do you allocate that to the customers as well? It's a, it's a little bit different than if you own your own plants. The analysis gets done on water loss and infiltration and inflow and looking at all those costs, but kind of, they, they kind of end up being the same thing between water and wastewater. It's, it's this phantom customer, I typically call it, that you got to figure out who pays for the phantom customer.
Anyone else?
Thank you, sir.
At this time, I would like to make a request to have this agreement approved and able to sign. John has found a couple of smaller changes that we need to have added into the agreement, and so we will, we would work with A two S to get those on the agreement before it was given final signature.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisk.
Do you know, what is the price of this agreement?
For water and sewer, the items that they discussed, I believe the sheet in here says approximately 90,000. Here's the budget.
Okay. On the backside, okay.
Given the size of our utilities, that, and we would pay that out of our existing revenues that we have in our utility funds.
We, we have the money right now to pay for this, you're saying?
Yes, we do.
I think we need it, that's for sure, Chris, right? I think we need some help here.
Commissioner Simmons, I would have to agree with, with the whole rate analysis study. I think, you know, the I and I is a big part of it, and that plays in with the core infrastructure strategy, try, track down where that's coming from. But I, I think though a lot of the big culprits this last time were the sump pumps and things like that, so we need to start accounting for that. We have about a six-year window before we actually get rid of all of our lagoons, so we have a way that we can, we can ship some of that up. But for example, as you, as you mentioned there, Commissioner Thorsten, that last week on one day, we would have spent extra $21,000 having stormwater treated for Fargo. So, so I think this is a big part to be able to justify to our citizens what, what we charge and start looking for, how we start replacing our aging infrastructure and get that fund not for, for, for today, but for 20, 30 years down the road, so we don't have this issue in the future.
Okay. If there are no questions, ma'am, I'll make a motion to approve.
On the request for proposals, was this only sent to one firm?
Yes, this was.
Commissioner Simmons?
My motion still standing?
Sure. Okay. Approve the contract? Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Thorsten, been moved and seconded to approve feasibility study on water and sewer as proposed by AE two S. Is there a second, or is there any discussion? Hearing none? See to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion carries. Next order of business. Item number three is concerns regarding sewer mains on 19th Avenue Northwest. Mr. Allen Ray. Mr. Ray.
Hello. I spoke to you about a year ago about the easements and that there, and I'd like to say I never received any, um, full letters on that that were kind of promised or response. But, um, right now, I'm, my front yard where you guys went through is unmovable, or ruts and little spots and that. And if that's a finished grade, that ain't acceptable. And then I also have some damage in my house, very minimal, just two little cracks like that over doorways that I attributed to the vibration of the machines coming by out there. And I spoke to more engineering a little bit about that, and they referred, or said that wasn't up to them. And who do I speak to? And do I do the finished grade in my front yard and tell you guys? Or what's the agenda on that?
John? This is the first time that I was made aware of an issue with grade or whatever. Dr., John, or Dustin, one of the two?
Oh, yeah, I guess I'll start with the grade. First, I'd like to ask, what is your address?
Eight twenty-five, 19th Avenue Northwest.
Um, thank you. The issue with the grading, I know the contractor is still not complete with everything. I, I believe there was a, a group meeting last week or the week before, I, I think Chris was attending, and they went over with the contractor some additional grading efforts that still need to take place. So I'm not 100% whether or not your particular property was part of that discussion, but I know throughout the corridor, there's, there's several areas where the contractor still needs to come in and do some finished grading and then establish the turf, so on so forth.
Yeah, I know the, the meeting I attended there.
I think I can speak to this a little, also Commissioner, sir.
Mr. Brungart?
About, about a month ago, about middle of June, we were out there on site with township officials and meeting at your neighbor's place, and it was determined at that time that the rough grading has been completed, and every time the contractor tries to get back out there to finish the grading, we've been, we've been dealt with some rain. So our plan is still to go out there and finish grade it and to, for lack of a better, better term, give it the city treatment. So we're going to be bringing out some extra black topsoil and fine grade it and, and do that tighter mulching, so it gets to be more of a rural thing instead of a, a typical rural type ditch. So that's, that's, yeah, it needs to be done, but it hasn't been completed yet.
And I shouldn't, it'd be nice to be able to mow my yard off, certainly would be.
Walk around with weed blacker. There's quite a bit of standing water out there right now. I saw that this morning.
The ditch is, my holes are not cut back to the grade, I have drains set, but.
That field. We'll ask the, the project engineer, project engineer, or whoever sits here also, so he can speak, he can speak to the particulars of each spot, so.
There's one, there's, both here nor there, but there's a tonter sort of, what's going on. Um, in home, there's a big, big machine setting in my backyard. I have to go under the river. And I asked them, who told you this?
I have here.
Project manager.
Hope they don't have the use of B there, it should.
About a day.
They didn't do any damages.
Well, the damages, those.
But we can work with you with, with those cracks and take a look at those. It's, it's, it's not difficult to save the machinery.
I guess. They're pounding chunks of dirt down in the first and ground. There, my house, just a little hole that got shot down. I do excavating, and I'm surprised that there's not more damage to it than what I see, but I've spent more time talking to people. If I would have just gone in there and fixed the two little cracks, many times it's happened.
Mr. Ray? Mr. Ray, you, you pulled out your camera. Apparently you have some photographs. Who's the point person on this, public works or engineering?
I can take a lead on that.
Okay, if you'd share those photographs of, uh, Mr. Brungart?
He drove by, he's seen the rest.
Yeah, all right.
Certainly, certainly not done. I, I can attest to that. It's, it's a important issue. I'm pounding up the back.
I have something to ask.
I can touch base with you here.
So Mr. Ray, Mr. Brungart will be your point of contact, and if we got Chris, well, yes. Okay. Commissioner Simmons?
Chris?
Yes, sir.
I know that, that Mr. Ray brought up in the beginning, his very first words were when we talked about, I think there was some financial involved there, but he'd sold easement or whatever. But did, I know we discussed it as a commission, did, did we not ever get back to him and tell him?
Well, I, if I remember correctly, Commissioner Simmons is, is, there's several properties up there, we needed easements to do this work, and I believe that, that you had previously platted, I believe, so you signed it.
Right, and, and I, I'm not going there. I know we already talked through it. What I'm just asking is, did we communicate back to him what we had pretty much sort of telling him now that there's not a lot that?
Right.
We could do about? Did we? You're kind of saying, Mr. Ray, we didn't get back. I just want to make sure we're communicating with you, that's all I'm saying.
Um, I spoke to you guys, I think on the 15th or 16th last year about this time, and then you guys were going to get back to me with what I asked you about the easement protocol on. And then the next commission meeting, I signed up to speak at because I hadn't heard, and then at 4:30 in the afternoon, you guys canceled me out. I haven't heard anything since.
So Chris, you might want to follow up with that as well, with a full conversation and.
So we're on the same page, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Could we go back to the, our record, not this evening, but I would like to know what transpired that Mr. Ray was removed from the docket also? I want to know why.
You happen to know that, but did you say was around the date of that meeting? Okay, so August 6th. You spoke to the, after that?
And then the one that I got canceled on was the next meeting.
Okay, I will look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Moving on to the next order of business is item number four, is a review of the resolution finding that petition for, for vacation is in proper form and contains the required signatures. Mr. Shockley?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Commission President. Uh, this is a housekeeping matter. This is for the vacation of the right-of-way between Cheyenne, the Cheyenne Plaza building and the Pioneer Plaza and the fir-, and the firm development where the VFW MIA Plaza is located at. We, because of the, the purchase of Off the Wall, there was kind of a time differential, so we replatted part of the alleyway between, or the street between the two parcels, and now we have a formal petition signed by both owners, one is the city and one is the developer to formally vacate that area. And so it's a housekeeping matter. Uh, this resolution says that you found that there's, uh, the proper signatures are in place, which there's only two property owners, the developer and the city, and just setted it on for a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. Any questions for Mr. Shockley?
Do you need a motion on that? Make a motion to approve?
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please?
I got it.
Commissioner Jurdick seconds, been moved and seconded that we approve the resolution finding the petition for vacation, that we have the proper form and, and signatures for the vacated property by, I'm going to place, Cheyenne Place, excuse me. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is item number five, is a review of the bid results and engineer's statement of cost for water distribution project thirteen twelve and project number thirteen thirteen. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Commission President Dartis and members of the commission. Uh, this evening, I'm here to request your authorization to award a construction contract for the water main distribution project. Uh, just to remind the commission that we have a phase one of thirteen twelve, which is the water main that's going to go from Main Avenue down to Thirteenth Avenue, basically along the fairgrounds there. Um, that's phase one of that particular improvement number. Uh, phase two is, is going to be bid later this month, and then thirteen thirteen, which is the water main that is going to be extended from Main Avenue to the north up to Twelfth Avenue along Ninth Street. Uh, we received bids, the, we only had two bidders, they were relatively close. Uh, after reviewing the bids and included in your packet is a letter from more engineering along with the, the bid tabulations and, and as well as a engineer's statement of cost. Um, evaluating the, the bids and in comparison to the statement of cost, the, the current bid plus our contingencies is going to be for a total project cost of $2,623,000. Comparing that back to what was presented when we reviewed the engineer's report, we are about 7.1% higher. Uh, again, certainly within the, the threshold identified by the century code of 40%, which by the way is, is a threshold established to compare those results for improvements funded by special assessment methods, but, um, wanted to present the same information, although this project is being funded through a combination of a, a grant received by the state water commission as well as our capital dollars. So with that, tonight, recommending, uh, awarding a contract to KPH in the amount of With that, I would be open to questions.
Commissioner Simmons?
Thank you. Dustin, uh, didn't we have some issues with KPH? Are they out of kindred?
Yes, so if you recall, last year, we, we had some issues that we were resolving. They were a little bitter on a, on a project, actually the utilities that we were extending along the alleyway and, and the, behind the Pioneer Place. They have since actually recently completed that project. Uh, the, uh, did review last week any other outstanding items that might make them not in good standing with the city. If you recall, we do have an ordinance that if you are not in good standing with the city, we will not negotiate contracts or enter into any kind of agreements with that entity or authorized permits for them. But, uh, we did basically clear them of, of any current issues. So at this point, they're good, in good standing with the city, and again.
How did we resolve that issue? I don't recall resolving it.
Well, when we awarded them the contract for the Pioneer Place, it was contingent upon withholding more, or basically a retainage increase, our typical retainage is 10% on a job, and we increased that to, I believe, 40% on that particular job.
Okay, so, okay. Do you remember that, Mike? You there?
You too.
I remember that.
Okay, so.
And as of right now, that project is complete and, and ready for, for final payment. We haven't issued a final payment, but it is complete. Uh, I believe we've signed, Public Works has signed a substantial completion, basically accepting the work that they did, and so again.
Well, this is the, this is the company that we had problems with the pricing, right? Of one of the, some caps or whatever, covers or whatever it was.
Yeah.
And we resolved that issue too?
Yes.
Okay, I just don't recall. Okay. I don't want to keep getting. I don't want to get in any trouble here, but.
I had the same.
Yeah, it just sticks out so much.
Before getting to this particular point. So when we opened bids a couple of weeks ago, it gave us some time to go through and vet through, um, all the concerns, that particular issue as well as the current project that they were working on and just to make sure that that is finished and within acceptance, so.
Okay, thank you.
Am I correct in my reading of this, Dustin? That of the contracted bid number from KPH, five hundred and ten thousand dollars is for, is from the State Water Commission for project number thirteen thirteen and one million, one hundred thousand is coming from the State Water Commissioner for thirteen twelve. So that's a one point, one million, six hundred and ten thousand dollars of this two point six million dollars is coming from the State Water Commission.
Correct, correct. Um, and in my next item, we have an amendment to make to the engineer's report for phase two of thirteen twelve. Uh, in there, I do summarize the total project expenses and incorporate what the eligible funding is from the State Water Commission. The, um, the grant is basically sixty percent funding, but they cap it at a certain dollar amount in that five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And one point one million is basically their capped amount.
Any additional questions from the commission? It's your pleasure. I move accept. And moved by Commissioner Olson that we approve the report of the bid results and the engineer's statement of cost for the water distribution project thirteen twelve and thirteen thirteen. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? The only comment that I'm going to make is that, once again, this is out of the bid periphery of what the engineers thought this would cost. It's over a five percent, which is kind of my benchmark. Uh, and I'll be voting no on this. Uh, seven percent is not acceptable, over and above what the engineer costing is, so. Is there any further discussion? Being done, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Next order of business is item, um, number six is a review of the engineer's report for thirteen twelve, phases one and two and project thirteen thirteen. Mr. Scott.
Thank you again, Commission President Dardis and members of the commission. Uh, as I just previously mentioned, uh, we are here tonight to amend what was the cost identified for phase two of District thirteen twelve. Phase two is now the portion where we get from Thirteenth Avenue, south of the interstate and across the diversion down to Twenty-first Avenue. Um, I did ask more engineering to prepare a summary of the reasons why we have to amend the engineer's report. Uh, you have that included in your package. Uh, combination of increased prices. Uh, there was also a quantity error in the previous estimate. So, again, just want to bring forward what our current estimate is today prior to getting into the bid opening, which is scheduled for July, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, July eighteenth.
Could you, for the public record, tell us what that quantity issue was?
Yes, so there was, uh, an increase from the engineers. The original engineer's report had a sixteen inch Water Main quantity of five thousand, six hundred and forty-four feet and is now estimated at seven thousand, six hundred and forty-four feet. And it was basically a typo that was on the very first report. The, um, there is an increase in quantity of twenty-four inch steel casing pipe from seven hundred and seventy-five feet to one thousand, two hundred and forty-one feet. And this is part of when we went through and are repackaging this bid. Our original plan was to bid everything as, um, or bid thirteen twelve, phases one and two as a separate package and then bid thirteen thirteen as its own project. We had since, uh, for efficiencies and cost savings, repurposed everything into a single contract for all the Water Main work, basically on the north side of the interstate. Uh, that is going to be more inviting and conducive to a certain nature of contractor versus the, uh, phase two of thirteen twelve, which is predominantly going to be a lot of boring activity to get across the interstate and our diversion. Um, so one thing that the engineer realized recently was that the quantity of the twenty-four inch steel casing pipe, um, needed to be increased based on the current plan. And then there's also just the, uh, the general nature of the prices that we've seen recently for, uh, the, the steel casing pipe. The original estimate, we had about anywhere from three hundred and fifty to six hundred and fifty dollars per foot. Uh, most recently, we've seen that, that number in the range of five hundred and twenty-five to five hundred and fifty dollars a foot. So, again, just wanted to, uh, reflect what we're seeing. It is a competitive bid process, so, um, hopefully we'll get better bids than what we're estimating. But just, again, trying to be transparent. And as soon as we recognized, uh, a couple of weeks ago that things were off, we just wanted to bring forward an updated estimate. Um, and then also in the packet, I did, again, summarize where we're at for the total project costs for both projects. Uh, right now, we're looking at a total project of roughly five million, three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And that includes, uh, the non-construction type costs, land acquisition, engineering fees, so on and so forth. Uh, take that into consideration with the one point six one million dollars of State Water Commission funding. Our total estimated local share cost is now at three million, seven hundred and six thousand dollars. So, um, again, our, our schedule to bid phase two is July eighteenth. And this particular item here now, again, is to amend the engineer's report. But the only change is the cost reflected in this phase two. So the work moving south of Thirteenth Avenue, across the interstate and across the Cheyenne diversion. And with that, I'll.
Any questions for Mr. Scott?
Just a general question. With Mayor Dardis' concerns, which are legitimate, but is the timing on our bidding, taking bids on this, is that having a negative effect on the bids we're getting? In other words, we're, most of these companies are pretty darn busy with other projects. And we're letting bids here in July and August, you know? Uh, granted, maybe some of the work can be done during the winter months, which is desirable. But, um, does that, does that have a negative effect on it? And of course, none of us are economists or can figure out what the economy will be next spring, whether the materials will go up and, you know, it'd be negligible as far as the difference. But I'm just wondering, when we start getting later into the season, it seems that, you know, the bids seem to have a history of getting, you know, the spread over the engineer's estimate seems to get bigger and bigger.
Absolutely, great question. Uh, yeah, typically, especially when we still have a completion date within this year. So if we were bidding at this time and still expecting that project to finish up by November, we would certainly see an increase in pricing. Uh, these particular projects will have completion dates of next year. So we feel like there is ample time to get the work done. Uh, we wouldn't see an increase, uh, at least based on a tight time schedule. Uh, but the timing, uh, certainly the market can fluctuate throughout a given year. And so you might just, uh, even though we have a, a good, call it management plan in place, giving the contractor adequate time, if this particular time of year is, um, susceptible to steel, the price of steel increasing because of a tariff, you know? Something like that could happen. And now you're, you know, if you just would have bid a month earlier, you could have avoided some of that. Um, so, yeah, timing certainly does play into consideration. But, again, with, with these projects having a completion date next year, I don't feel like we're getting an increase in prices based on a tight, tight time schedule.
I realize I've only been here a short time, but in this time, we've had a discussion with a contractor that miscalculated all kinds of different parts of the project. And it was this contractor, uh, on First Avenue. There were items left out or price per was, they didn't do the multiplier or whatever the case might be. Now, uh, on the numbers that you gave us on the footage of this pipe, uh, one part of this was eighty percent, uh, off when it comes to the dollars. Seven hundred to fourteen hundred is about, is that not about, or isn't that something like that? Eighty to ninety percent off, a miscalculation. So my question is, are we not giving these people enough time? Uh, anybody that's doing, whether it's the engineers doing the estimate and/or the contractors putting their bids together? Is there too close a, there's, there's a common reoccurring thing happening here? And it, it falls back on the citizens that we accept it and we pay, pay the piper. And I, I just don't, I want to know if it's a process or procedural thing that we're rushing this to? And I realize of all the growth we're having, we're having that. But I, I'm concerned about that, whether it's, again, from the engineers that are putting the estimates together or the contractors that are delivering their best bids on this thing. And then all of a sudden, we're, we're upside down from estimate to cost. Mr. Scher?
Certainly a valid point. Um, speaking on this project specifically, we've been working on this thing for nearly two years. Um, I don't feel like this one has been pushed through in a short timeframe. However, uh, there are other projects, especially development driven, where a developer comes in and is eager to get lots, uh, developable. So in those cases, I certainly have seen us have a, a real quick turnaround from getting the engineering component done to, um, going out and trying to get the improvements constructed. Uh, in terms of a contractor having adequate time to review and prepare a, a proposal for these, um, projects, uh, the improvements funded by a special assessment district require that you advertise for two weeks. The other improvements that are not funded through special assessments have an actual requirement of three weeks of advertising. I think, um, in both scenarios, that is adequate time for a contractor to sit down, make sure they're, they're squaring their things away with subcontractors, getting ahold of the supplier or so on and so forth to put down adequate pricing. Um, again, certain things can fluctuate like, like the market. I know a couple of months ago, it was tariffs on steel. Um, right now, there's a shortage on, on cement, cementitious material. So we're seeing an increase in concrete pricing. So some of that stuff can certainly play in. But, yeah, overall and in general, it is something to certainly be mindful of. And, um, I know, uh, in the, in the recent couple of years anyway, it, we have slowed our timeframe up for even development projects where in the past, we could, um, review a preliminary plot and have a project out to bid and under construction within six weeks. Nowadays, it takes most for twelve weeks. So we're, we're getting better at that. But again, on this particular project, I feel that there has been adequate time to certainly put together the, the design intent and, uh, some of these things are, you know, some, sometimes like typo can happen. Um, and again, i- if anything, as we do here through the, through the market, that a particular material cost has increased, it's good that we were able to catch it and bring it forward, uh, prior to getting to a point of committing. Um, you know, the, certainly the state laws don't require us to do this particular, um, level of detail for, especially for projects that are funded through special assessments. However, um, I think our city's practice is certainly, we're striving to increase our transparency and have full disclosure on, on these things. Um, certainly before we're, we're getting into bids and even as construction is progressing, so.
I commit, I, I think Commissioner Thorsted's comments are probably right on track for, you know, the building season and the workforce shortages that we're experiencing in our community, that I think that the prices just do go up because with the overtime or whatever, they're going to have to commit in order to meet these deadlines. So I think that, uh, again, bids being let in July and August have a tendency to have that happen to it. Uh, at, at a futile attempt of, of humor, I'm going to say that, you know, if you're running a pipe from point A to point B, that should be pretty easy to figure out what that distance is. And if you need some help, I'll get Frank Lenzmeyer and the two of us to go out there and drag a hundred foot tape and we'll figure it out, won't we, Frank? Sorry, that's my sense of humor for the night.
Sorry, taken.
Any, any, any additional questions or comments for, uh, Mr. Scott? And it only cost me a sandwich to buy Frank at not lunchtime, so. Uh, with that, uh, it's your pleasure for Mr. Scott's item number six, to review the amendment to the engineer's report for water improvement project thirteen twelve, phases one and two and project thirteen thirteen. Motion to approve? Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And Commissioner Jervik seconds. Been moved and seconded to, uh, reveal the amendment for the engineer's report for water improvement, District number thirteen twelve, phases one and two and project thirteen thirteen. Is there any further discussion? Again, I will only note that because this is an amendment to the project, I will vote in favor of this. Uh, but the bid, when it comes in, will be reviewed closely, so. Any further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Item number seven, the West Fargo Downtown Rebranding Discussion. Melissa Richard, Callie Roth.
Thank you, Commission President Commissioners. Um, just to give you a little bit of background information on how this came to be. Last April, we started implementing a new meeting structure for our downtown business association. Um, prior to that, they weren't meeting very regularly. They didn't have a clear vision, um, after some redevelopment started to occur. So, uh, we really set a regular meeting schedule. So they meet once a month, um, and they're a lot less formal and they're very interactive with all the business owners. Um, the idea of rebranding has been a reoccurring discussion between the DBA as well as city staff as well. Um, and part of that is that Fargo's downtown is so present and active. Uh, some people feel as though the term downtown is very monopolized by the Fargo area. Uh, so business owners that do attend and do share their input do feel like looking into different brand options, um, to differentiate themselves as businesses as well as the area would be very beneficial. Uh, so with those conversations in mind, Melissa and I have put together an RFP that's in your packet tonight. Our hope is to partner with, uh, the DBA as well as the CBB. Uh, I did distribute this RFP to the DBA at our July meeting. Um, got a lot of positive feedback from business owners. If approved tonight, I'll follow up with all membership holders of the DBA to discuss the financial partnership aspect of it and get a formal vote on that. Um, and then I, we also plan on going to the CBB July board meeting as well to discuss with them. So if approved, our hope is to have representation from all entities if they all choose to participate on the interview board, um, as well as a commission member. So with that, I'll let Melissa talk more about the branding aspect of things.
Thank you, Callie. Good evening, Commissioners. I just want, in the RFP, I wanted to, there's a lot of background that's for the benefit of the firms that would be reviewing the RFP. Uh, but I did want to point out a few things. One is that this action is really well supported in our new comprehensive plan. There's a, there's a major initiative that talks about establishing downtown as a cultural center. And the idea of branding is specifically noted in those recommendations. Um, and then in terms of the goals of this RFP, uh, we really want to be able to develop a sense of place, purpose and value for community and visitors in that downtown area. Um, we want to, uh, be able to utilize the branding to secure additional redevelopment work. Uh, we want the ball that has started rolling to continue to roll. And we think, uh, developing a really well-defined brand will assist with that. And then we want to be able to have a platform to add that as an amenity to the list of amenities that the city offers that helps when we look at those bigger corporations that want to come in and, and want to know that they're, they're developing in an area that has the, the live, work, play elements that their employees are looking for. And I know sometimes it's scary to talk about rebranding or what that represents. And so under project scope and deliverables, hopefully that better defines for you guys. One of the things that we're asking is that when we look at the brand or the brand identity for that area of town, that there's some market research done. Uh, we want that, uh, we want that to involve the community and to be something that not only asks our residents what they feel that area is, but then also looks at outsiders to understand what would be a marketable element back to them. Um, I also want to assure you. I also want to assure you that it's possible that this firm comes back and says, you should call it downtown. Or maybe they'll say you should call it something different. But we want to have that research and look at it and really define what, what the best thing is to represent that downtown. And then off of that, a name, a logo, a tagline really doesn't define a brand. What, there's many elements that go into a brand. And so the study would also be about developing all those elements. What are the key messages? What is the tone of voice we use? What is the logo? Sure, but there's, there's so much more that goes into it that the communications staff, the DBA, West Fargo events, all those different players would be able to leverage to really support downtown. This would also be a pivot point for the DBA to utilize as they start to look at their goals and their missions and their values that they're pursuing as they become more formalized and activate downtown. Included at the end of the RFP, the last page is just, for your guys' benefit, is just the kind of timeline that we're looking at in terms of getting the RFP to each of the partners that we'd like to invest in it. The, the timeline for them going out, we've, we've noted that West Fest and the final cruise night fits within the timeline. And that's a great time when downtown is activated for that firm to either be present and really experience it at its best or be out there and getting feedback and, and information. So with that, I'll turn back over to Kelly.
So our, our request for tonight, if you guys choose to move forward with this, is to approve five thousand dollars of economic development sales tax, which is a third of the budget we requested in the RFP, with the intention of partnering with the CBB and the DBA. And if it is something you guys would like to do, we would also recommend you choose one representative from the commission to join the interview board as well. So with that, we're here for questions.
Commissioners. Mr. Jervik.
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. I mean, first of all, I'm definitely for this, this topic. What are we defining as the geography of downtown, which we don't want to call downtown?
It's defined in the RFP as Cheyenne Street as it stretches from Main Avenue to Seventh Avenue. That might be a little bit of a point of discussion with that firm as well. I know the comprehensive plan has noted the neighborhoods and some of the assets around downtown that could be utilized for future development too. So that might be something that becomes part of the discussion, what truly is downtown and what are the offshoots from it, for sure.
Yeah, because I mean, I think a lot of the residents that live, you know, a block or two on each side of that certainly would consider themselves in that neighborhood, if you will. And, you know, I, I also just want to make sure that their voice is heard through the, you know, through the work that's done, in terms of whatever comes out of this.
I just want to echo Commissioner Jervik says, I think, her comments from people that live in that area that they've been kind of left out of the loop. Now, maybe they're not involved in this branding project per se, but I think we need to incorporate them as well because anything we do along Cheyenne, which we all feel, or most people feel is a positive, still has a lot of impact on them, whether it's traffic or, you know, even foot traffic or anything else. So as we move along, I think we have to consider, you know, each side of Cheyenne Street as well, maybe to the river and maybe a couple of blocks to the east as well and, and allow involvement by, as Commissioner Jervik has stated. So I, I concur with what he says.
As to why I forwarded you, forwarded you an email today from a resident that was wondering where the opportunity would be to, for them to give input. And, you know, I know that the Downtown Business Association is, is a membership group, but maybe that's an avenue that if, if the leadership there is okay with having some of the public that, that we help communicate to the public, that there might be an opportunity for them to get involved in that discussion there or, or, you know, through your department, Mrs. Richard, that you reach out to the public and get some input there. Because as Mike and Eric Bo said, that I think that's an important component that, that they feel they need to have a voice in. You know, and of course, when they start talking the branding, then they're, you know, then what type of activities might follow with that branding? And what type of pressure might that put on their neighborhood? So for them to request to be in part of that discussion, I think is a very viable thing, so. Any other questions for Melissa or Kelly? All right, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Jervik moves to approve a five thousand dollar expenditure as a part of the city's, and you have a commitment from the DBA and you're going to visit with Charlie, is that right? Is that where we're at now?
We don't have a formal commitment from the DBA. I've been talking to them about it at every meeting since we started in April. So I'll follow up with them pending tonight and.
So you might, then with, that's, that's a contingency of the motion that we're a one-third partner in this. All right. I'll second that. Second, Commissioner Simmons. Been moved and seconded to approve a five thousand dollar expenditure for a, a RFP for a downtown rebranding. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, ladies.
And then I just ask if you guys could just nominate one of you to serve on the interview panel as well for interviewing the candidates.
Anybody have an interest?
I guess I'd be interested.
Commissioner Jervik is voluntary. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next order of business is item number eight, the final plot approval and PUD amendment approval of Eagle Run Plaza Eighth Edition. Mr. Sober.
Thank you, Your Honor. This application is to accommodate the development of what is formerly Lot One or currently Lot One Block One of Eagle Run Plaza Sixth Edition. This was previously approved totally as a concept of a PUD next to and adjacent to Cheyenne Thirty-two. At the time of the previous PUD, it was determined that detailed development plans would be done at a later date. With this, they're looking at a little different approach. They're proposing district standards. I generally don't take any issue with that. What they proposed, however, I think is probably a little bit more than is needed. Our PUD statement of intent really is to try to find significant modifications for unique areas. In, in my review of this and our planning commission's review, it was really determined that, that could be determined through the site plan approval. What they were looking for is making sure that they can have multifamily in this property. And what we proposed for a change to what they proposed was that multifamily would be acceptable. However, that if it were to be on the site, that it would either be above, beside, or behind commercial establishments along Cheyenne Street, when either physically connected to the building or upon the same legal lot of record. Planning Commission reviewed that at their April second meeting, determined that to be acceptable. The reason we've had such a delay here in time before it's been before you is that they were working on their own site plans, but now they want to make a transaction. So I don't have site plans or building elevations to provide to you tonight. They'll be coming forward with that probably at our next meeting. But really, right now, they want to ask that that PUD be approved and the plat be approved. We have all the requirements of the plat. And the applicant is also acceptable of, of our proposed recommendation to just remove those district standards that I have provided to you, but add that condition that if a multifamily project is proposed, that of course it's, as I just stated. So property owners within a hundred and fifty feet were notified. No comments were received to date. As I stated, after April second meeting, planning commission reviewed and approved and are hereby recommending that city commission approve the PUD and plat. So with our CO, our court overlay district standards, when we did the Cheyenne Street project and expanded that, we changed the yard requirements there so that this commission and our planning commission will review any building or site plan before it is actually permitted. So you'll see those coming soon. So we feel the overlay district and the other standards are enough. We don't need to have an additional district standard other than that one condition. With that, I'm available for any questions. Not sure, there is applicants here as well, so.
And you got no response from the neighborhoods regarding this, this size of building?
Yeah, we, we did send out what they provided to us and I did have that in your packet. You know, with the fact that you'll be reviewing the site plan and everything, we didn't want to highlight that so much, but we did send it to the neighboring property owners.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sober. Questions for Mr. Sober?
I'll make the motion to approve with the eight conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Been moved to approve with the eight conditions. Is there a second please? Second. Commissioner Olson seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the application or approval of the PUD amendment of Eagle Run Plaza Eighth Edition as presented by Mr. Sober. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is item number nine, the final plot approval of Heritage at the Winds Edition, a replat. Mr. Sober.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's actually Heritage at the Wilds Edition. And we just recently got a revised plat to actually rename it the Wilds Thirteenth Edition to continue with the pattern of naming in that neighborhood. Really, all they're doing is proposing to change five blocks into four, I believe here. So nothing major, no concerns, simply a final plat approval, no rezoning. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sober. Questions, Commissioners?
So I'd ask, Your Honor, if, if we did approve it, just to approve it as the Wilds Thirteenth Edition as opposed to the Heritage at the Wilds. I apologize for that change. It was kind of last minute.
I'll make a motion if there's no question to approve the Wilds Thirteenth Edition, correct? With the four conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second please?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Jervik. Been moved and seconded for the final plot approval of the Wilds Thirteenth Edition, a replat. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is item number ten, the construction updates. Mr. Scott.
Thank you again, Commissioner President and members of the commission. I'm going to start with addressing Mr. Simmons' comment at the last meeting regarding the updates I gave on Cheyenne Street. And Commissioner Simmons had requested that for this meeting, we talk about the Thirty-second Avenue intersection specifically regarding the delays that were incurred. Talking with the engineers, we have on record eighty-six days of delay at five thousand dollars a day. So that's four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. However, I will caution that the contractor still has theirs. Call it due process for the contracts. They can submit justifications and, and claims that would potentially decrease that particular number. At this point, they've submitted two of such requests. One for forty-five days and the other for thirteen days. So a total of fifty-eight days is what they're asking for forgiveness at this point. We haven't gone through and, and bedded that out. We believe at this point, the thirteen day request, justifiably about five and a half days. But again, just wanted to, to start out with that particular component that in total, we're at eighty-six days of, of liquidated damages. And we will continue to work through the contractor on what that final dollar amount will be based on any justifications that, that they provide the city in terms of days that they were late. So at this point, I want to open that up to questions on that particular portion. Do you have any questions regarding Thirty-second Avenue Intersection and the liquidated damages?
Commissioner Olson, I just want to make, make a clear, the contractor is asking for fifty-three days of forgiveness?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight.
Yep, so fifty-eight days at five thousand dollars a day would be two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So again, out of the two claims they've submitted, one was for forty-five days, the other was for thirteen days. We've only reviewed, or our engineer has reviewed, the claim for thirteen days of forgiveness. And they could substantiate five and a half days of that particular request. The forty-five day claim that they've submitted, we have not gone through. And in either case, collectively as, as a city, we haven't made any determination on how to move forward with that.
So they have a log in there, whether it's weather delay or whatever the case? I mean, that's part of all what you review?
Correct, yep. So if it's, for example, a claim based on rain, we will go through and evaluate what is a typical rainfall? What is, where are the actual events? What was the component of work that was disrupted? You know, if, if they're working on the inside of a lift station, rainfall doesn't matter, for example. So if I recall, some of the, the delays that, that they've at least requested are based on some dry utility conflicts, weather, so on and so forth. So again, we're, we're in the process of evaluating that. And I just want to caution that even though we're at eighty-six days tabulated, logically, we will agree to some kind of a, a decrease based on the justifications that they submit.
I realize that in this day and age, everything equates to dollars and money. But with all due respect to all of those of you of responsibility to the city of West Fargo, I'm more concerned of the delays and what it had an effect on the taxpayers, as we can all witness, because we were subject to those criticisms and social media attacks and the like. And so I respectfully request that, you know, it's one thing to talk about dollars, but it's the inconvenience and what it, it created to our taxpayers and the public. That's my first concern.
Absolutely.
I'm off my podium.
And that is part of what we consider when we establish within a contract what a dollar amount per day would be. We take into consideration whether it's a high-impact project, so on and so forth. A, a standard development project, for example, in a greenfield, might have a liquidated damage of, say, a thousand dollars per day. You can see the magnitude here with Cheyenne Street being so critical and disruptive to the, to the general public. We set that much further than what our typical projects would be. I'm not saying that that's going to pacify anybody. It certainly, you know, even if we did subtract the total contract by four hundred thousand dollars, that's an impact to the general taxpayer on their assessment of about forty dollars.
Yeah.
So it's, if you were to ask anybody, that's not worth the inconvenience that they've had.
My point exactly. Thank you, sir.
Other than that, you know, general construction update, yeah, weather has been certainly a factor. The, back to Cheyenne Street, overall, things are a week or so behind based on some of that weather. I know in Segment Three, they were out there paving in the intersection of Thirty-eight so that we can get that opened up and, and start moving traffic through that intersection. Segment Two, one of the updates, I think it's good for the public to know is that the sidewalks on Thirty-second Avenue there are now accessible and open, so. But in general, you know, we had, we heard a gentleman earlier this evening regarding the, just the nature of cleaning up our sites, grading up. That has been certainly a challenge in a few other projects as well. We're working with the contractors to get caught up and, and make sure that we can get it established.
Questions for Mr. Scott? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number eleven is the budget discussion. Mrs. Fisk?
Good evening, Commissioner President and Commissioners. I'll give you this.
Thank you.
Okay, I will talk through this and then I will just take any questions that you guys have as you were the ones that requested that this come back again. And I'm very happy to answer any of those. As I stated before, when this budget was first starting to be worked on, it was a real large challenge. Our mill values, though they've grown a lot, it doesn't take a lot to use up the value of a mill when it's around a hundred and seventy thousand dollars is one mill. We came into the budget year. mill. We came into the budget year straining from the prior year as well, and with increases in staffing and things that were needed and have been needed, it was quite significant. At first, we were worried about having double-digit mill levy increases, and then we had it, we got it down to 9.35, and now we've been able to get it down to 5.34. Of that 5.34, there is no increase in the general fund. For mills, there's a .34 mill levy increase in the share of specials. That's just our specials that we have to pay as a city. Four mills in fair and one mill in library. That constitutes the full 5.34. If you, the next two pages just show you our projected budget at this point for all the different funds that are in the general fund, and then special funds, moving on to debt service, which is just funded totally by the funds that come in, water, sewers, sanitation, and then our other funds, tree planting, library, airport authority, and parks, we don't, that's just a pass-through fund. So, with those items, I'm not sure what your questions are. I could go into more detail on anything that you might want to know.
Thank you. Commissioner?
How were you able to reduce the mills there? Did you reduce costs, or did you recalculate, or are we using reserves once again?
What we did is, we were able to acquire more. Part of what we're using is, we're receiving about a million dollars more in interest with the way the rates have gone up, so we're reallocating that interest. Before, it was going to all these other miscellaneous funds, when truly the people in the funds are, the people that work, are the general fund itself, are the ones that are doing the work to keep that going. So, we're reallocating that into the general fund to help cover costs. We have also, we have some franchise fees that we had found out about through the help of John Shockley, that we were able to institute that will take place starting in January. Just, we did reduce a number of items out of different budgets by meeting with different department heads. So, there's just a number of items that were used to try and calculate this. We do have a small transfer from the water fund to also help, which is by law, as long as you have a profit, you can take 20% of the revenue and move that over if you wanted to. This is very tiny. It's not even a percentage, but we utilize some of that as well. We do have a line item in here for administrative fees that we would receive next year. That is also helping us balance our budget, and we don't plan on utilizing that unless we have going forward. What we're trying to do here is create a three-year budget plan to get us out of where we came into 2019 with. So, we're trying to adjust as much as we can, being fiscally responsible for 2020, and then we're going to take a look at, we're going to start right away in January of 2020 and start working on 2021 and 2022. We've gotten staff projections from all of our staff. We're working on a number of different items for revenue and other ways to finance things that we really need to do that are important for the citizens. And so, that's, it's been a lot of creative work.
Going back to Mike's question, there's a, you've outlined four different items, which is great. What is the actual reserve dollar amount that we are pulling from reserves?
We aren't pulling any funds from.
No reserves?
No.
Excellent.
Thank you. One comment I would throw at there. You know, I had, a week or so ago, or had, from one of my fellow commissioners, just some concern about the positions, the added positions within the fire department. And so, I was able this weekend to have a quick phone call with Chief Fuller, and one of the ideas we've thrown around that maybe you could follow up with him on Tina, was that those three positions, instead of budgeting them all for hired during in January, could be slightly staggered, you know, hiring one in January and one a few months later and one, it could be staggered to potentially make some additional savings in there while still meeting the needs of getting those people on board and meeting the needs of the fire department, so.
I appreciate that. I'll work with Dan and talk to him about that when he comes back, and if there's an adjustment to be made, I'll bring it forward at the preliminary budget hearing.
I have a few questions, so I'll let anybody else go first, if you like. Commissioner Simmons?
Okay, Tina, you ready?
All right.
The first one, you should be able to answer pretty quickly. I just got a couple of questions on the different salary caps, like for the court, if you can, if you don't have it in front of you. But, basically, it went from $79,000 to $165,000 just for the salaries. I'm assuming that's, I know that's one new person, but.
That's two.
The courts are getting two people?
Well, the way the budget is laid out is Jim took the actual nineteen budget that we started the year with. You guys amended that budget by allowing a second person to be hired. He doesn't account for that in the nineteen budget. He puts that whole person in the twenty budget. So, technically, that increases for two staff, even though one came in this year and one is being requested for next year.
Okay. That one's done, then. Does that work for finance the same way?
Yes. Finance, what was happening there is.
That one's done, then.
Yeah. Well, finance, it's kind of interesting. What we do is, a large number of our finance staff spend their days working on water and sewer and garbage. That's their jobs, their utility billing. And so, prior to Jim being here, what we did is transferred a percentage of their time and cost for all their salary and benefits into the water and sewer fund. And instead, what he did is pulled it all back into finance and is just making a transfer to cover the cost of what they do from water and sewer into there. So, it looks like there's this big change, but there's a transfer coming in to cover it.
Okay, yeah. Some, it just doesn't look right. Like even HR, I mean, is that the same way too? Anyway, I think you got me on every one of those, huh? So, let's move on. I would like to talk, I guess, a little bit about the fire department.
Yep.
I did talk to Eric a little bit before the meeting here, and from what I read and understood, is a little bit different than the way he read it and understood it or heard it from Dan. But, reading through this, and what I'm concerned with is the three, basically, deputy chiefs, two deputy chiefs, and then the one educational officer or whatever. But, reading through this and actually talking to Dan, unless I misunderstood, he made it sound like he wanted to bring them on now, all three of them, get them all trained in and ready to go to train the new people when those fourteen new people come on between now and 2023, and a new building goes up.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. I did, since you had mentioned that to me, I did call Dan as well and ask him to explain to me the logic behind what was being said. And he said that it, there must have been a miscommunication or misunderstanding, because he said at this point with the staff that they have, he needs all three of these positions in there to start working with the current staff that they have, so that everything is good and strong and solid, so that when they add on more people, you aren't just throwing all these people on there. Your people that you already have are trained properly. They know what the operations people are doing. They know what the support division's doing, and everything is on track. He said to be the most efficient and to be able to provide the best safety for the community, he really needs to have all three of them now, because he's just got too many staff there and not enough people to help him keep all the different things going that they have to have for a police department.
I just, you know, to put on three of those positions at $116,000 plus a year, that in itself is three mills, almost three mills. It's like, you know, perhaps he should have asked last year for one, or can we, I don't understand why we can't even go one or two this year and spread them out between 2023, because here's what's going to happen. First of all, the truth be told, and I'm not, I'm, you know this very well, I'm all for the fire department. I was here when it originated. I supported, I helped Rich support it to get this going. I get the vision. I love it. But, that doesn't mean we have to give them everything, and that's kind of where I'm at with this. I mean, 2023 is still a long ways away, and honestly, we don't know whether the diversion goes through. I'm assuming it will, but we don't know that. We don't know when it's going to go through is the important question. We don't have a lot of growth right now to stretch out and grow. We don't have that much room left. So, until we know exactly what's going to happen, I think going that mu, growing that much with those top positions, a good example is, you know, I want to throw, we're all seeing the diversion's going to come through and we're going to go north, right? Well, it's fine for us as a city, staff and the city commission to say that, but we have to have the buy-in from the developers and the builders, and most of all, the citizens, you know. It took years and years to get Goldenwood going, and it took, I think, three developers failed up there. Just because we annexed that in, and even if it was twenty, or, you know, got it going in 2021, 22, does not mean by any means that we're going to have the growth up there right away. And so, I want to be very careful of, between the wants and the needs of what we're, of what we're doing.
And I appreciate, appreciate that, Commissioner Simmons. When I look at the requests from the fire department, I consider it kind of like what was done for the police department. You need to get your staff organized. You need to get your management team in place in order to be able to provide the best service possible. And we did that with the police department a year or two ago in order to get them on their feet and get them in the direction they needed to go. And I think the plan here for this, whether they add that fire station in 2023 or not, they still need these three positions in order to be able to be as effective and proactive and timely and attentive to the people as possible. That's my opinion.
Tina, the difference that I see it is that the police department, which, by the way, I commend you, Chief. Your budget was fantastic. You're not asking for a lot, so thank you very much for that. I think you did a very good budget. But, the difference is they're a full-time police department. The fire department is supposed to be a hybrid. And the way I see it going and looking into the future, it's almost as if Chief Dan wants to make this into a full-time fire department and take away the volunteers. In fact, I've heard that he's going to sep, actually, we're going to separate them, right? Volunteers will have their own, yes, Tina, that's what I heard from Dan himself. Dell's here, maybe he can speak to that. But, from my understanding, the volunteers are actually going to end up someday probably taking this building and having their own, and doing a volunteer.
That's the rural department.
That's the rural fire department, the rural. There's going to be, when the city, when the fire department comes on to the city January one as a city department, we will have full-time, and we will have volunteers that are considered paid on call. Now, the rural fire department will have their own designation, and they will manage things in the way that they want to, which is probably mainly almost all volunteers. But, that's up to them how they manage that department. Dan's worked with them to give them proper tools, and they're working on it together, and all that stuff will be logistically worked through as we move forward. In fact, we'll be working with John and others as we move towards the end of the year to make sure that all the buildings, equipment, and everything is provided for. But, but yes, the rural fire department, I'm not sure what their total plans are, but the city of West Fargo Fire Department, January one, will have full-time and paid-on call.
Okay.
You know, one thing I could.
Yep, go ahead, please.
Just throw out one topic that's related to that. You know, when I think of adding these three positions, I also take it into the context of the dramatic increase in call volume that the fire department has had. And so, although we count heavily on volunteers, when your call volume from year to year increases by, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I think it was forty, was it forty percent?
It was quite a bit.
That puts a huge burden on those volunteers, and I think we have to also understand that in relation to the full-time people that kind of come at it from a different perspective and can help lessen that burden over time. So, you know, you know, I, I guess from my perspective, I'm for the three hires. I'll go back to what I said, you know, a few minutes ago about maybe staggering those to kind of help address some of the cost concerns you have, though.
How much of a difference, Tina, do you think that would make if we staggered those throughout the year? Would we save, what would we save? Do you, just, you know, even a gas ballpark, I mean.
Um.
Hired one in what?
If you hired one in January, one in July, and one towards the end of the year, you'd save over a year's worth of compensation.
Yeah, you'd cut it.
Almost a mill. You could almost save a mill right there. So, that would bring it, that could bring it down to, I mean, yeah.
Not a full mill, but you'd probably.
Pretty close, yeah. There's more to talk about those as we move forward, so. I think I can get them, I hope I can get a mill out of you at the end of the day. Maybe not, right? But, we'll try.
If I can make a comment. I worked for an agency for over thirty-six years, and we got to the point where we were looking, we had to do more with less, and less never showed up. To put such a strain, such a morale eater, it beat us into the ground, and we have people leaving all the time. We needed more bodies at all levels, so I am in support of putting them on as soon as we can.
And that is a, thank you, Commissioner Olson. That is an issue that I have noticed at City Hall, and I've noticed it in other departments. We can't continue to work our people as though they can do the job of three people. We have a community that's wanting more information. They're wanting more services. They're wanting more. We can't keep providing it at the level that they expect. I mean, if we make a mistake, because we're just so bombarded, they're totally offended that we made a mistake. Well, we can only do so much. And I've had staff that have threatened to quit, and I've had to keep them on by just promising them that, you know, it's going to get better. Just trust me. You do an excellent job. Let's keep moving through this. And I certainly don't want to burn out Dan or Heath or, I don't want to burn out any of our people, even our departments, even our sanitation employees, public workers, anybody. They all work very, very hard.
And Tina, I'm not trying to do that either.
No, and I know you're not.
That's not my goal here.
No, I know that.
My goal is to try to get that mill levy down. That's my job as a commissioner. That's all of our jobs, and I totally get. I mean, I think we've been very generous the last few years. I won't use the word generous. I think we've been, yeah, responsible, doing a good job. And I think we realized over the last maybe ten years, we probably were a little cheap, you know. I'll admit that. There's been times I've been really tough on that budget. But, again, my job is to do the best I can for the citizens as well. And so.
I appreciate that, and I'm trying to do the same as well, because if we don't have good staff, we can't do the job.
I agree.
Them or you. So, I appreciate that.
Okay, so I'm off of that one. How's that? I'm off laughing. The other thing I want to talk about is, is I want to talk about communications. And I don't necessarily, I'm not objecting to hiring somebody else. We'll go right back to what we just said. I realize they're stressful. I realize Melissa works her butt off. I have no quarrels with that at all. I think she does need help. I hate to see her get it, because I don't want her to see her get away from the PR stuff, because you're so good at that, Melissa, working with the street fair and working with, you know, the, all the projects. I mean, you're great at that. I don't want to see you go away from the communication side. But, you're ahead of the leader now, so I realize you have to move up the ladder a little bit. What I am concerned with is some of the things that are just in her, that she wants to do. And of course, not the rebranding, but the rebranding of the city as a whole. You know, that brand we got, I realize someday we'll have to change. I get that. But, right now, it is still vibrant and working well for the city, and I can't imagine why we'd spend $50,000, $50,000 to go out and hire a consultant to come in and, you know, to check out our branding right now. And so, I want to go, I'm sorry, but I want to get to that page. Okay, so, in, 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 some of the things she's included, and by the way, Commissioners, this is in the budget. So, that means when we approve this budget, okay, it, this is part of the approval, whether you think it isn't or not, it's, we're still approving the budget, and this is in the budget. I'll leave fifteen in a second, because I know you're gonna, you bought that, and that's fine. But, again, when we make a motion to approve the budget, it's in the budget. Whether we like it or not, it's in there. Whether somebody tells us they're not going to use it or not, that doesn't matter. It's in the budget. So, I am concerned with the transfers from the $60,000 of the Tourism Events Committee that she wants to use to do that, and $50,000 to hire a West Fargo, well, West Fargo Events or whatever.
That line item was cut.
But, Tina, it's in here, though. It's in the budget.
It's in, it's in that one that you're looking at there, but we've cut it out. From the, the budget numbers I gave you do not have the $60,000 for West Fargo Events going, that's supposed to go into the.
The $60,000 and the $50,000, right?
The, just the sixty. Now, the $50,000 for the branding is, it's still in the budget, but it's not being paid for by tax levies. It's being paid for, they request us to pay for it from economic development sales tax, because we see, looking at our brand, looking at what, we've got a community that's totally different than it was fifteen years ago. And so, we need to reach out to that community and find out, what do you see when you think of West Fargo? What do you signify? Maybe this turns out to be the exact same thing they want, but there's more to branding than that. We need to find a way to sell our community. It's all those things that Melissa talked about for the DBA. It's the same thing only on a. It's the same thing only on a huger scale. We need to start finding creative ways to market ourselves because we are almost full.
So you're saying you wanna move forward with that?
Paying for it out of economic development sales tax.
Which is still, it doesn't matter where it's coming from, it's still taxpayer money.
Correct.
So it's still coming from-
Yep.
From taxpayers. What about the sixty thousand for the quarterly print digital? Is that?
That we have coming out of the, um, sales tax for infrastructure because what that would do is send out information to citizens and get feedback on all kinds of different things. I could have Melissa come up and explain it, but it's just a way to get in touch with people over and over and over and bring back to you, these are their visions of our community, this is what they see, this is what they don't see. What do you guys think? That's, it's an overall, just to reach out to people and not, if we heard anything from the special assessment forums, they wanna be included, so we have to find a way that's possible and it takes getting some kind of technology or somebody in there that can help us get that done.
So in the communication budget, that hundred and eleven thousand dollars for marketing, that's those two items?
Should be fifty and sixty.
I'm looking at it, they're not numbers.
Yeah, a hundred and ten, yes, that's it.
Hundred and eleven thousand assessment.
She's gonna do four thousand in there for ads.
So that's, that's those two items.
Yes.
And then in her budget, her actual total budget's three hundred and eighty-five thousand, six, six, nine and whatever? That's her actual total budget?
With salaries?
That would be salaries and all, I'm assuming salaries and all, three hundred and eighty-five thousand. I just don't see, you know, we, we fight and fight to get thirty thousand dollars to, to do something huge for our community as a convention center. Whether it works or not, we'll see, but yet we come up and we're just gonna, we can just spend sixty thousand on digital printing without a question. I don't, I, I have a hard time with that. I really do. Both of those. I, I won't support a budget like this with those in them. And I think if we took those out and we talked to the chief and got those three positions at least, Derek, throughout the year, we could be down at under four, four mills.
Mr. Commissioner Simmons, um, those two items in the communications budget do not, they do not get funded with the levy, the mill levy.
You can't use them for that.
They aren't, they aren't in there, they're being funded by sales tax.
That's what you're saying.
So they won't make any difference whether they're in there or not, as far as the mill levy goes.
Okay. That's all I have. I just wanted to speak my piece and let you know how I feel.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Simmons, anyone else? Michael?
I just wanna touch on, uh, what Commissioner Olson said and what, uh, Tina said as well. I, I think we've had a great plan by the fire department and I think it's very important that we establish a structure and that's been well laid out in, in a lot of studies and a long-range planning and all that and, and I, I'm comfortable with where we're at. We knew we were gonna have added expense. We, I won't say we're getting by on the chief, but we're getting by very reasonable. I think our, our fire service is very reasonable. Police department went through a similar thing within the last couple of years, just because we had to get them to a level where they, they could handle the, uh, the amount of business they're getting and that's the same situation our fire department is, is in and we're, we're utilizing, we'll call, uh, they're still volunteers, but yes, they're getting paid for on-call service, but they're still part of the plan, it's still a hybrid, they're very important and we can, we can certainly burn them out really fast. I mean, uh, the vote on our fire department is great and we knew it was gonna take a few years and, and there's gonna be a little financial pain to get to where we need to be, so I'm very comfortable with where we're at and I, I'll leave that decision to the management of the department, where they need to place those guys, to put them in place, to provide training that's and, uh, leadership that's required for the, the people that are serving the city of West Fargo's toll. I, I'm very comfortable with fire department, where they're at and what their plan is, so I, I, I won't personally, uh, support any changes there.
Thank you Commissioner Thorst. Anyone else? Did you get your ticket?
Our first meeting in August will be the preliminary budget hearing. At that hearing, what that will do is set the total expenditures that can be, the total amount of money that can be spent out of any tax-loving fund. So that's the general fund, fire, special assessments and general fund, uh, at library and airport. And so what that means is that as we go forward between the preliminary budget and the final budget, if there are changes made in there, if you're adding to any particular cost, it has to come off of another one. We cannot increase the dollars. We can decrease, but we can't increase, just so that you're aware of that.
Mrs. Fisk, last week I raised a question with regard to the, uh, IT budget with, uh, and when I went through the line items of all the departments, I come up with six hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of IT upgrades and you were concerned that in Mr. Anderson's budget, he had included some of that and it was a duplication. Uh, what was your findings on that or have you had time to do it?
I have it right here in front of me and I can, I'll forward it out to all of you. Um, we had James go back and separate expenditures between hardware, miscellaneous, software upgrades and subscription support. And so when you look at those, the category of hardware, hardware upgrades for the year, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred for, for two thousand twenty. Um, for just the miscellaneous items is nineteen thousand, five hundred, not overly significant. Software upgrades, thirty-six thousand. And then subscriptions and support, which are items we have to have, are four hundred ninety-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-nine, so we're around six hundred and six hundred and seventy or something like that, six eighty.
My numbers are six eighty, okay.
Yep. So I did check into that and that, you know, and part of the problem we have, um, is that things don't go on, like you used to be able to go and get clickbooks and you tap something for, like, you know, a year and you could keep it for five years and you weren't forced to have an upgrade. We have to upgrade our subscriptions every year and our maintenance agreements every year. We don't have an option to say, well, we really don't wanna upgrade our windows. So James has gone through this and he's, trust me, he's very frugal. Um, and so there's, this has been vetted and, and brought down by department heads and by him as well, so. Uh, I can get you the details of it, I'll email it out to you and you can look through it.
Thank you.
Yep.
With regard to comments about, um, staffing, our first concern has to be for the safety of the employees that we have responding to emergencies and, uh, it is difficult to see the mills that we're having to commit to the fire department. And, um, at a broader sense, uh, I've been reaching out to the county and to the Park District and to the School District to see whether or not they are having some of the same issues with the rapid growth that we, well, obviously the county's a little different, but the Park District, the West Fargo School District and, and our city commission. And, uh, I'm going to use a term that the gentleman from AE Two used earlier today and my concern is shock, taxpayer shock. Because obviously if there's a mill increase from the city, there's a mill increase from the school district and I think that's forthcoming from the discussions that I've had. I don't think there's any question that the county's going to have a mill levy increase. Uh, I've talked with the mayor of, uh, the city of Fargo and I know that you've been in communications with the city administrator, Mr. Grubb. I've visited with, sat down one-on-one with Jonathan, uh, uh, Gud, uh, also from the city of Moorhead. And, uh, as a community, uh, all of this growth is something that we all love to brag about, we all love to tell everybody across the state of North Dakota, uh, about that's done. But it has ramifications and the ramifications is the burden on the taxpayers to, to provide the services that are expected and needed and legally we're responsible for. So, um, when, you know, I, I hope that any department head that's sitting in here and certainly you as our, a city administrator, don't take this personally when we're asking about the budgets in your respective departments. Uh, we have a responsibility and the, the taxpayers, with all due respect, aren't gonna blame Chris if he needs another maintainer or a dump truck or whatever. Yeah, it's gonna be this bunch up here that's, that's going to pay that price as far as the public's perception of how responsible we're being, so I, I wanna state that to all of the fine employees that we have here. If there's, if there's room and you can, and you can, uh, help us out for this budget period, I'm gonna ask you to do that. And, and same goes for, for Tina and for, um, Jim Larson too, our finance director. I think that that's important, so this is not a personal thing. It, we, we, we have a responsibility to the taxpayers and I know you all take that very seriously, so. Like you said, uh, any other questions for Mrs. Fisk? Dustin doesn't agree with me, by the way. That's apparently what that's going on over there. Anyone else?
I just have one more comment on President Durdas. If you look at, and I totally agree with you, I, you deserve, I, we deserve the questions because that's, that's your job. And I totally, totally take no offense to any question whatsoever. I just respectfully ask that if everyone wants to take a look at what, um, the Park District or the School District and the others that are on our tax saving for the city of West Fargo did this year, look at what they did for nineteen and look what they did for eighteen. We didn't increase last year, we didn't really increase much the year before. So we have been doing the very best we can to keep this contained and they, the other ones have increased. So at some point, we've, and I said this years ago, we can't keep going down because it's gonna bite us and it's gonna come back and it's gonna hurt the citizens. So I, I respectfully agree, but I hope that the public will look back and see our history of trying to be as careful as we can. So, thank you.
Anything else from Mrs. Fisk? All right. Uh, how about your city administrators' report, Mrs. Fisk? Thank you. Told you you should wear tennis shoes when we're having meetings.
This is easier, I can move faster. Um, for those of you that were able to make it and for those of you that weren't, last Thursday, um, Chris presented the Good Samaritan Award to Tom Milner and it was the very first award given out by the city of West Fargo and that is a non-police or fire department award for a Good Samaritan for, and for great acts. Um, a year ago, about a year ago, there was an accident on Twelfth Avenue and a family was hurt and there was a boy that was very hurt in his, and he had a great laceration on his neck and Tom's response, we feel saved his life. And Dan Fuller is the one who recommended him for this award because he felt that his life-saving measures made all the difference in the world for that boy, so we were quite proud and, and I think he was too and Chris did an amazing job talking about it and going through the importance of understanding what public works is and what all they do and it just, it was really a nice event, but I just wanted to bring that up. Um, I also have a piece of good news. He sent this out today. He's been doing a wellness program over at the police department since not too long after he started in an effort to, um, not only have a stronger, healthier staff, but to, which turns around and gives great benefit to the city. But as a side note, in two thousand seventeen, he said there were three thousand eight hundred and eighty point seventy-five sick hours used, not including sickly pale, but sick hours used by seventy different employees. And two thousand eighteen, the first full year of his new policy, one thousand four hundred and fifty hour, fifty point seventy-five hours among seventy-eight other employees. This year is skewed a little bit because there's been so many babies being born and a couple of other things, but they're still right on track and it proves that the wellness program is very, very successful. So I just thought that was really wonderful and he's been doing a fantastic job, so I thought I would mention that. Um, on that note, Melissa's been working diligently on the city of the year application that is due to be sent into the League of Cities here in about another month and so we'll keep working on that and keep you posted. Um, the liquor control board will be meeting again tomorrow morning. That's been going really well, the meetings are well and we Courtney posts them so that everything's legal and that's going well. Tomorrow, if you have time, at three o'clock, um, West Fargo's astronaut, Dr. Tony England, I'm not sure if I said that right, will be on Skype over in the training room. And children are invited and others to ask him questions and, and so it's kind of an exciting thing that little kids will be able to come in and ask a real astronaut different questions, so that should be fun. Um, on the twenty-fifth of July, there's a, I think there was an invite sent out by Chris to do a brown bag on the core area infrastructure study and get, roll out some of the first results for you guys, so, um, that'll be coming up and I'm sure there'll be more information that Chris will filter out and along with Dustin and get that out to you. I wanted to let you know that our leadership training, we had two sessions, one this month, one last month, for all managers, anybody that managed employees. And they were both very successful. There were a lot of really awesome outcomes from that. And Jenna will be giving you a report at the next meeting and kinda showing you the outcomes of some of the, some of the pictures and some of the thoughts and the things that came through. It was really exciting to watch all of our staff intermingle. I mean, people they didn't even know before. You're having library and public works and police all at a table and collaborating and it was very, very wonderful. I was very happy and I wanna thank you guys for allowing us to be able to do that for our employees because that was huge to watch them all collaborate and get a stronger bond together. Um, as I said already, the preliminary budget hearing will be on August fifth. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisk. Uh, any correspondence?
No, there is not, thank you.
All right. Um, item number fourteen, non-agenda items. I'd call on Tim Solberg, please.
We had a request, uh, your honor, uh, from Enclave Development, HM, to, uh, have a plat approved, so I'll let Austin speak to that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Solberg.
Austin Morris of Enclave Development. And, uh, wanted to respectfully ask, uh, we had some miscommunication on, uh, getting a plat signed last week, so. Um, we have a situation where we have, uh, the final plat was approved at, for first reading at city commission last time and was approved at planning commission. Um, so I'm asking if that agenda item could be added to this agenda for final plat approval. We have a builder looking to start some homes in the next few days and he's in the two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollar price point. This final plat approval doesn't result in any special assessment district or any financial, um, input from the city. Um, and I'd be happy to have, uh, Tim has reviewed the plat and it complies with R1SM standards, but I'd, uh, love it if you could do this. It'll have, uh, some challenging hardship if we can't get it done today with that builder, so. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Mr. Solberg?
So we reviewed the plat. Today we did receive a signed final mylar. Uh, generally speaking, we won't put it on the agenda if we don't receive it in time. Uh, so I said to Austin that he could come before you and ask to be on the agenda. I personally have no issues with it. Uh, we do question, maybe Dustin, make sure that if we do get it approved, that there would be a condition that he continued to be able to review the drainage plan and utility. Uh, anything beyond that, maybe Dustin can speak to you.
Mr. Scott?
Uh, thank you. Uh, at, at this point, I haven't, um, seen a request, uh, from the developer on whether or not they were interested in the city creating a special assessment district, but as, as Austin just alluded to, I don't think they're proceeding down that particular route. However, uh, this is a reconfiguration of lots, uh, with uh, the, uh, the need to relocate some of the services that were already, uh, brought into the currently plotted lots. So if anything, we'll just, we would need to continue to work with, with Mr. Morris on, uh, the plan to properly relocate these services, uh, certainly work through with, uh, Public Works on, on getting a right-of-way, uh, permit to do so.
And those expenses would be borne by the developer, by Mr. Morris and Mr. Mellon?
So, your honor, if, uh, you'd like to approve it tonight, I'd ask a motion be to approve the second reading of rezoning for Highland Meadows Fourth.
Say that again.
Uh, so it'd be a second reading of the rezoning of Highland Meadows Fourth to R1SM and a final plat approval. And then that same motion to be made for Highland Meadows Fifth.
Tim or Dustin, does, does there need to be on there, move forward at your own risk? So if something comes up that you catch? Because I don't wanna be responsible for that. If you should ca- we give them approval and then you catch something down the road or when you're looking at this that you didn't see.
Yeah, certainly, I, I would think it's appropriate to certainly add a condition to the approval that, uh, the, any, any improvements or infrastructure that's needed to accommodate the plat, uh, be, uh, permitted through Public Works and, you know, reviewed and approved by engineering. Um, along with that, there is the, uh, the inspections of such things, so if, if they are making new connections to our facilities, they're gonna have to document that and, and record that, follow our, our city standards. Um, Mr. Morris is aware of, of, of these requirements and, and he's got an engineer on board working with him, so um, I'm confident that it'll get done. It's just, it's not done currently. Uh, and along with that, there's also technically a revised drainage plan that needs to be prepared. Uh, just as the, the lots are now being reconfigured, we need to establish grades or elevations- grades or elevations at these new property corners. But again, uh, it's something that the engineers working with is familiar with, and, and I'm confident they can do, we just don't have it yet. So, anything that, the final approval should be contingent upon, um...
Okay. Another question there, do we, do we have to bring it first onto the agenda and then? Do we have to do it separate, John, do we have to bring it onto the agenda first?
Probably want a motion to amend the agenda, to add it, and then vote on the underlying issue.
Make that motion.
Or second?
Second.
And moved and seconded to move item, uh, second reading of Highland Meadows Four onto the agenda, is there any discussion?
Your Honor, uh, could I just make a, just a correction, if you don't mind, Highland Meadows Fourth and Fifth, um, we had already had the first reading for both of them, so just the second reading for both of them. Sorry.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now...
I'll make a motion to approve with Dustin's, mayor, did you write them down, the conditions?
Uh, sorry again.
No, go ahead.
Um, I, I got this at about three o'clock today, so I'm trying to catch up on it, but, uh, if we just actually kept the conditions as were recommended in the first reading, uh, it covers it, because one of those is amended utility plan, is reviewed and approved by city engineer, um, if he doesn't approve it, then, I mean, you're kind of giving him that, that we're not, it's not actually approved then, so, it's sort of at your own risk, I think.
So, so would that, John, how is that, would that be part of the, like, move forward at your own risk as well? I mean, is that all kind of added to this?
You'd want to approve the second reading, uh, second reading and the plat approval for both, uh, with all the conditions set forth in the staff report.
Okay, I would make that motion, mayor?
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons, second please. Is there a second, please?
A second.
Commissioner Jurdabig, second, it's been moved and seconded that the, uh, second reading Highland Meadows Fourth and Fifth with the contingencies, uh, be approved. Further discussion?
Are we setting a precedence for doing something like this, moving it ahead of a normal policy or protocol, just because a contractor wants to come in and start working in a day or two?
I hopefully made it as difficult as possible for him to do this, to sit through a meeting and, I mean, you're right, and this is why we have a deadline, um, when it hits five o'clock is the deadline. What I was told by, uh, Austin today was that there was a miscommunication between them and their surveyor on this, and so, that's where I, I'm not gonna bring it forward for them, they gotta do it themselves.
The surveyor of record, uh, let them down, quite honestly, it's a short construction season, it's another two weeks before we meet, uh...
Three weeks, actually.
Three weeks. Mr. Morris approached myself and Mr. Solberg, and, uh, I, I told them that we would allow this to happen, if you choose not to, that's your, that's fine, but, uh, we wanted to give them the opportunity, because it's a three-week window, uh, that, that would be lost for a short construction season. And, uh, as, uh, as part of the discussion, there is a, uh, developer that's looking at buying thirty lots and developing thirty homes, and I thought that, uh, it would be appropriate for you folks to make the decision, rather than, uh, myself or Tim to say no. Because I'm, I consider myself the gatekeeper on the fourth thirty, four o'clock Thursday, actually, Courtney is the gatekeeper, she's the boss, but, uh, I feel very strongly about that.
Five o'clock on Wednesday.
Five o'clock, my guy, I'm all good.
See, I, I, we all, we all, we all kind of keep going a little earlier.
I think she tells me four o'clock, and you guys get five o'clock.
Yeah.
Anyway, uh, so I thought it was appropriate, uh, due to the nature of the work that, uh, these folks have done in our community, that, uh, again, we exhibit our flexibility to work with people and to be successful at what we do, so. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next order of business? Any other non-agenda items? Courtney's already kicked me twice under the table, telling me it's time to go home. She always, she writes down every meeting what time she estimates that we'll be done, and...
My computer died.
Yeah. I did. I thought that was a message, she just closed it up, I thought we were done. So, is there anything else, non-agenda items? Moved to adjourn. Thank you, Commissioner Simmons, is there a second? Commissioner Olson, thank you. Moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So, move to adjourn.